Good evening. This meeting of February 24th, 2020 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Parks.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
I move we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, that leads us to the Person of the Night, Mr. Rheingans.
All right, well, just a quick history. So this is our second of three strategic plan/priority initiative board meetings that we do every year. So for those, I know everybody in the room's been down this path, but for those who might be watching at home, eight years ago or so, we developed a new strategic plan, maybe it was seven years ago, and then we, in a desire to sort of keep it a little bit more fresh or alive, we developed a process about six years ago to do priority initiatives. So every year, the board and the administrative team at the district set 18 to 20 priority initiatives that we focus our work on. We do other things as well, but these are the things that we've sort of identified that highlight the work of the district and the connection to the strategic plan. And then we report out to the board and the community multiple times per year about where we're at with those priority initiatives. So tonight is our second report out, so we are looking at those priority initiatives sort of in the mindset of it's February, or where we should be if we hope to get to completion or major completion by the end of this school year. So we will do a third meeting in May. That one is slightly longer because we report out on our 1920, I lost the year there for a minute, 1920 priority initiatives, and then enact or accept the 2021 priority initiatives. So tonight, with that in mind, the priority initiatives that I talk about, you'll notice that there's a status, and the key for that is on the projector now. So operational, which is the green, white arrow inside of a green circle, is where we attempt to get to for most of our priority initiatives because we don't want to do it one and done. We want to make sure they're operationalized or standardized and become a part of the district. Completion, there are some things that we just do to do and say it's done, and that's a check mark and we move on. Significant progress, study progress, some progress, and canceled. So when we first started this, six, seven years ago, there was no operational, we weren't viewing it at that lens. There was also no canceled. And really, the canceled is as important of an addition probably as the operation because the board identified after that first go around that, you know, if we're really going to kind of stretch ourselves, we should have an opportunity to have goals or priority initiatives on them that sometimes we get into a few months and say, it's just not the right direction, we're going to cancel that, either delay it or cancel it and move it another direction entirely. So that's, those are important additions to that. We do have some folks from the administrative team who are in the audience, and so we may have, as we get to questions from the board, if it's particular to one of their areas, they'll step up and make sure that they grab the microphone so that the folks who are watching this on TV can hear what you're saying, and then we'll just go through the questions that way. All right, is everybody good? Okay, we'll jump right in. Our first set of priority initiatives are on student achievement and development. As we start, I'm going to hand out some updates. Send enough around that you can give those to the media and others. Notice how I use the teaching strategy of not handing those out before I spoke so that you're listening to me and not looking at handouts.
Don't bring the elephant out at the beginning of your class.
When you're a social studies teacher, you had to use every trick you could.
These are the same.
All right, so everybody got a copy? So our first priority initiative is the operational status, and that is creating an array of coursework pathways that facilitate development of a student's interest-based academic plan. So it's about the ability to plan for those curricular areas where you're most, have the most interest, so for parents, for mentors, for our staff. And so the educational support team has completed work on pathways that align to the career clusters in the Cooter Navigator, the Career Exploration System. So again, Cooter Navigator is the interest system that students start working on in middle school and carry out through high school and talk about what their interests and skills are and helps them sort of align that with maybe a potential career path. And then that aligns with the coursework that the course they would want to take in high school to set them up for success, either in work or as they move on to college or whatever the case might be. And sample course recommendations are available in the career cluster section of the high school course guides. I believe we've shared that already in that course guide with our ed programs folks to look at what those course clusters look like. So that's a significant move in the right direction. It really supports parents, community partners who are mentoring and working with young people to help them understand what courses they should take if they think they want to go into engineering or into welding or anything in between. What courses should they be taking when they're in high school to set them on that right path? So that's been something that is under the operational because that's not a one and done check mark. We have the courses that we have today, but we'll continue to add to that as of course careers and the whole college career, anything takes on different meanings as, you know, careers tend to evolve and change all the time.
Do we get any data that gives us a sense of how that's being accessed or to the extent that it's being used?
So it was just in the course guide for the first time this year. So registration is taking place. So we'll gather some of that towards the end of this year, but since it's kind of in that process right now to be in that data phase. Number two is a check mark. That is implement the new Bridges math curriculum in grades K-5 and the new preschool plan to enhance instruction for the district's earliest learners. So again, that one's a check mark because it is a specific action. Bridges has been implemented across all elementary schools with professional development has been ongoing since the beginning of the school year, and the district-based and community partners preschools continue to be involved in implementation of preschool plans. So again, the focus for many years had been on literacy, and we don't want to ignore the fact that the STEM and everything else math is a vital core subject for our students as well. And so moving towards the new Bridges curriculum, whenever we change curriculums, there's a need to have significant professional development for our staff so they know how to access the material, what supports are available, and what comes with that. And especially these days with more and more supports and material available online, how do teachers, they know where that's at, how to access that, use it for students.
Now that that's fully implemented, are we finding that to be as good as we thought it would be?
You know, time will tell. I mean, I think the teachers would say yes. Now we've got to see what the data tells us as far as our students' success for it in math. Again, we put all of our money into the standardized testing, but one thing we will know is what some of that standardized testing looks like in the area of math with the implementation of the new curriculum, has that been an enhancement for us? I think it's also an attempt to be a little bit more user-friendly for the parent's end of things, so that parents of elementary students can have some resources and some really to help their students. But, so I would say yes, but again, time will tell on that data.
Sure. Well, and every first year of implementation is a roller coaster.
That's right.
Of its own sort, but...
Yeah, it's exciting up front, it's a lot of work in the middle, a little bit of confusion mixed in there. So it takes a year or two to completely settle, for sure. Ready to move on to number three? Study at-risk factors and develop programming for students in grades seven through 10. As you know, we have an alternative learning center that serves the students in 11th to 12th grade, and as we've sort of looked at the data, we, there's some need to serve students who are in need of an alternative setting, a little bit younger than their junior year. So that's why this study took place. A committee of district administrators, secondary principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches has concluded its work and made recommendations for programming and will fill identified gaps. So you'll see that that is in significant progress. Work is currently underway to develop a new program to serve students in grades nine and 10, including location, staffing, and curricular needs for this offering. So not surprising, the data would say yes, we have a need there. Now, the hard work is, and why you see that as significant progress as opposed to maybe operationalized, is that it's going to take a location, it's going to take some resources and commitment to say, okay, where is this going to be? What is the philosophy? How do students end up in or are they attracted to that program? What's the staffing look like? You know, so now it's a matter of matching the need and the resources together and figuring out where that's going to likely happen.
Is this a program that you can stay in or graduate out of? Because some students find success in it, and I know in the past have had to be forced out of it, fail again, and get put back in.
So that was a significant part of the conversation. That's exactly what happened. We've had programming in the past where a student maybe found themselves in a smaller environment and were successful in that program, and then we said, hey, congratulations, welcome to ninth grade, now go to the 1,600-student high school. And if you struggle again, then we'll move you back to the small environment. So our philosophy is, hey, we've, some students want that. They want to, you know, get things, you know, some maturity, get some things underway and move to the more comprehensive high school. Others find their home in a smaller setting and want to stay there through graduation. So that's very much a part of how do those programs work together? What does that sort of articulation look like so that the students have, and the parents and everybody involved in it, have some opportunities to either stay small or to go back to high school for whatever it is? We don't really want to pigeonhole them in one place, we want to have different, you know, pathways on ramp and off ramp.
When you indicated location in there, I assume that this is not ALC location, which would be back at the home schools or?
Well, so it could be, it could potentially be at the ALC, there's a little bit of a room issue there, so I don't know that, we're still, so nobody quote me as saying this is where it's going to be because we don't know yet. It could be finding space at one or both of the current high schools, and so do we serve Hempstead students and senior students in their home schools differently? Or is it one location? Do we have another alternative space-wise in the community potentially, or at a middle school, or just, space is going to be the biggest issue.
I don't recall seeing the recommendations for the programming from this study. Have we seen that?
Not yet. I think that's on a future ed programs.
Good, okay.
So that's another reason why it's, so we're at that point, and again, the timing is going to be based around, to some degree, the resources of the location, as you might imagine, programming is expensive.
Is it too early to size or scale this? If we're looking at seventh through 10, do we have a general, I understand it can ebb and flow, but is there a...
How many are we talking?
Generally, not how many students would we be talking?
Mark, we've had some conversation with that, Shirley. I mean, I think we're talking 20, you know, I can't remember what you guys came up with.
From the committee, that was one of the questions we asked, is what is the scope of students that you think we need to serve? And we're not talking a large number, and, you know, the high schools talked about, in each class, they said a handful, and we didn't describe what a handful is yet. And we have further conversations that are beginning at the high schools next week in terms of what you see here, the space, the location, and all of those things. And as soon as we get that figured out, then we are going to the middle schools to figure out what do we need to do for grades seven and eight. So that didn't get on here yet because we're figuring out the high school piece, and then following that will be the middle school.
There was a clear break between the need in the high school and to go to middle school, and those numbers have floated around, but we're probably talking somewhere in the neighborhood of fewer than 5% of our students in a particular grade level, somewhere in that 3%, 4%, 5%, 800 students roughly per grade level, so 20 students per grade level, something like that, real ballpark, but just to give you an idea of scope.
Thank you.
Shirley, is that about what we're talking about, somewhere in that ballpark?
Yeah, you don't know right now if there's additional staffing would be necessary?
Well, so it's an adjustment piece. I mean, so if those students aren't served in their school of origin or they are in a different program, then there's some staffing that can be, that can be massaged to cover that, probably not all of it though. So there probably will be some additional staffing, probably not large numbers because we're not talking a large number of kids. And because you're talking a small number of kids, it may be a small portion of the teacher's assignment. So they may teach, you know, science at one of the high schools and then have a section or two of science in their set.
What makes this group of students different than the ones that go to the ALC?
They're younger. So the ALC is for 11th and 12th graders, this is for ninth and 10th.
Okay, that's a reason.
Likely that some of them have very similar traits, they just, they're relationship-driven, and sometimes students who are relationship-focused, they do better in a smaller environment.
Right.
Thanks, Shirley. Number four. Enhance gifted and talented programming utilizing recommendations from the Gifted and Talented Program Study. Work is focused on creating action plans for the 2021 school year based on the recommendations of the GT Study Team with input from various stakeholders to meet the program needs of advanced and gifted learners as well as refining identification procedures to ensure equitable opportunities for currently underrepresented populations. So a lot of conversations and meetings around that. At the secondary level, current work is focused on exploring the potential and capacity for high school teachers to offer college-level courses in core areas. So two examples, composition and literature will be concurrent enrollment opportunities for our students so they can take that class at senior Hempstead and get college credit through NICC that will follow them to wherever they're headed to. Pardon?
The regions.
Well, certainly to the region, so Iowa, Iowa State, you and I, but many of the other schools will accept those credits as well.
Would there also be a focus for the high schools to get underrepresented students to take concurrent courses?
Absolutely. So in all of these, and so we probably need to make sure we're a little bit better with our literature, but with most of these initiatives, that's a significant part of what we're focusing on, is how do we get increasing numbers, but only not a million increasing numbers, but increasing numbers even places where they've been historically low. Absolutely. Number five. Leverage school-level areas of excellence and equity initiatives to create best-practice exchanges that foster information sharing, additional learning, and mutual support. So really, a lot of this is the work that's taken on through our new equity director as well as an equity committee that he's got going. Hopefully, you all saw the bio of Taj in the TH here a week or so ago, that was nice. And then she just continued in a variety of professional development opportunities based on equity across the district, including intercultural competency training, personal empowerment, and circles of justice protocol. So again, it's taking where the schools are at and adding to that training that some of this has been going on in some of our buildings for a long time, and some of our buildings that's more training, and sort of figuring out or supporting that opportunity, learning opportunity for our staff. Planning is underway to provide a variety of opportunities in the spring that allows schools to share best practices. So again, one of the things Taj has been working on is identifying, hey, we do this really well over here, and this really well over here, and this really well over here, but they're kind of happening in silos, so how do we bring those together, create support groups and trainings so that the buildings are learning from each other? Another thing that we aren't really prepared for tonight that we will talk about on, two months from now, is a relationship that we're developing through, I'm going to forget the name, Taj.
It's called the Great Lakes Equity Assistance Center.
So it's a federally funded program, Great Lakes Equity Assistance Center. It's headquartered in Indianapolis, and so we don't know a lot about that yet, it's a little bit premature, but we've had some Zoom meetings, and it's a federally funded organization, so there's no cost to the district, which is always the right price for us, just some travel expenses. But really, an opportunity, one of the things that Taj identified is how do we bring in best practices, not only locally, which is what those first two bullets talk about, what are the best practices that we're already doing, but then from a regional, national level, what are some best practices? So that's, we're very interested in that, but it's a little premature, but I just wanted to put you out, put that up and get some of the things.
Since Taj is right there, I know when you were at the city, there was a team of people that were able to go to all the departments to do the equity training. Do you have something like that to go in all the buildings to, so that the teachers are not only equipped, but prepared to navigate all the differences for the students?
Absolutely, and this is something along the line with, you know, we have administrators, we have teachers, we have counselors, we have content leaders, where, you know, where the representation would be when forming these teams. So we do have now an intercultural equity core team that is part of the equity, who are staff, our staff, and we're, you know, this group would be supportive to the equity director position to eventually kind of see what are the trainings are, what are the recommendations, what are the supports that we wanted to provide to different buildings? So that's basically kind of not looking at it from a top-down approach, but also looking, you know, bottom-up approach.
We've got a lot of folks on staff who are at very different levels, so you're to that training, and some have been at it for a long time. I see Nate Jenkins is here from senior, and Nate's been working in this area for quite a while. So how do we capitalize on a committee to put these folks and give them some opportunities to train, not only in their building, which is where they tend to be the most comfortable, but how do we call on them to help us do that district-wide? Anything else? All right, let's see, we are on number six. Develop, so this is a check mark, in other words, it is completed. Develop portrait of an educator aligned with the district's portrait of a graduate that supports and advances educational experience in which students are engaged in their own learning through the variety of styles, project-based and group-based, explicit instruction, collaboration, et cetera, et cetera. So in other words, last year, Mark really led a group about what is it that we want from a graduate? What are the commonalities? What are the things that we want our graduates to, what does that diploma represent, basically? And so then you take that to the next step, or maybe back it up a step, depending on how you view that. So what is it we need from our staff? What is it that our staff needs to bring to the table to help our students develop those skills, which is what the portrait of an educator is? Portrait of an educator committee, portrait of an educator committee completed its meetings and made a recommendation to the superintendent, so I've seen that recommendation, and again, we'll be bringing that to the board. Portrait of an educator will be presented to the Board Educational Program Subcommittee at the board meeting at its March meeting, so I believe it's next week. So stay tuned, I'm pretty excited about what that has to say. A lot of good work, a lot of folks involved in that, in that conversation, and it was really well done by Mark and all the people who were able to say, what is it that the teacher should aspire to?
Is then, is part of the next step then, like how that would direct professional development opportunities for teachers?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's all about, okay, so now that we know what it is, how do we get there, right? So hiring the right people is where it starts, but then also taking those right people and mentoring and providing professional development to help them grow, take it to that form. Number seven. Increase the number of students taking the ACT with a focus on underrepresented groups and gather baseline data on the students taking the AccuPlacer exam. Based on the work to explore student barriers to taking post-secondary qualifying exams, each high school will have a testing day during the spring of the 2000, 2000, I'm sorry, the 2021 semester. So this is, again, a recommendation that will be coming to the board. We've talked about this a little bit, it's really exciting, I believe. There'll be some kinks in the organization of it, but we'll get through it. So the mindset is, and Mark, hop in here if you feel the need, but of taking a day in probably April next year, in all juniors who are on track to graduate, so we have to define that a little bit, obviously, if somebody has five credits and they're a junior, we probably, but so all juniors will have a testing day, and then we have to work with the ACT folks to be able to provide some of that testing in-house. But where a student will declare, I'm taking the ACT, I'm taking the AccuPlacer through NICC, I'm taking the ASVAB test through the military, I'm taking, we're going to identify, and Mark, maybe the early test that I didn't mention there, so that all students on that day will be doing a test that is future-focused and that is college and career, and that is really an exciting opportunity for our young people. There's some costs involved with that that we're trying to wrestle with a little bit, you know, if we're going to give that test on our time, we're going to pay for it. But that's another barrier removed from students who don't. So we're really, to me, of all the recommendations, that's one of the ones I'm the most excited about, to have that day where we tell our juniors, if you're attracted to graduate, here's the opportunity for you to see where your skills are, where your interest is, what your attainment level is, and just see what the possibilities are. Mark, what did I forget?
The AccuPlacer, the Right Placer, and Alex are the three tests you'd take at NICC. So they would take all three of those.
The ACC, the AccuPlacer, the Alex.
Right Placer is a new writing.
And I think we're talking about doing the ASVAB as well?
Yes.
So students who may be interested in service that way and see where they're scored, because that's how you figure out what job you qualify for if you're at a 2000 military.
How would a kid know which one to take? Is there a narrative that can help them explain all these?
There will absolutely be, and we'll share, and we'll push that out to parents, to the community, to obviously our guidance counselors, to folks involved in mentoring, so that, you know, kids take the right. I'd like to think they're all good choices, but obviously, we want to help them make maybe the best choice for themselves, and we are hoping that it increases our ACT. Right now, about 60% of our students take the ACT, we'd like to see that grow, and certainly that removes a barrier because it removes time, transportation, you know, all those pieces, it's just part of a normal school day.
Would a student be able to take more than one of these, or?
Probably not. Could you double up and include those, I know you can't for the ACT.
You could for the community college tests, that would be a possibility, but not, not for the ACT. You can do the ACT and the other tests.
At least not on that day.
Yeah, you could do it on a roll at a different time. You know, it's a, it's going to be a little bit of a, of an organizational stretch, but we'll get there, and we want to make sure kids, again, are making choices that maybe align with what they think they're, you know, year one's going to be year one, but when we're three, four years into this, it's going to be a low-oil machine, for sure.
Hopefully, they don't, but would a student have a choice to decline taking a test?
It's going to be a normal school day, so they would have the same choices they would on any day where they didn't show up. It's a school day, so we're going to have them sign up for something, and now if they don't show up, then they don't show up, but...
Oh, but if they show up for school that day, that junior student on track for graduating will be taking some test?
Yes, they'll all sign up for something, that would just be their class assignment for that, for that time.
For people who are possibly concerned that, hey, by giving more kids opportunities, the test scores may go down, how do you respond to that?
They might, and we have to not worry about that because quite honestly, that wouldn't mean that our score, our students who are scoring well now are going to get any lower of a score, they're going to get, and so if we add, so one of the, so our ACT is at 22.7.
22.8.
22.7, 22.8. The state average is 21.8, the national average is 21. I'm a little off on those numbers, but pretty close. College success indicator is 21. And so, in my opinion, there, an argument could be made, we're missing a lot of kids between 21 and 22.8 who aren't taking that test, who might take that test and say, oh, wait a minute, maybe there is something else I should be thinking about doing. So will we head south a little bit, potentially? But it's just, it's a statistical calculation, it's not a reflection on how the outcomes are.
And it's not the purpose, I mean, that's really not why we're doing it.
Right.
I think that's important to understand, too, is it's not about raising the ACT score or protecting it, it's all about giving kids a better idea of what's next.
If we wanted to raise our score, we'd have 40%.
Right.
We're trying to go the other way. There's a body of research out there that says that a young person who takes the ACT and fills out the FAFSA, which is, gives them some insight into what, right, resources are available for them, are much more likely to, especially for first-gen students, to go to college, because they see, hey, I got the ability, and here are some resources. And so we're just trying to pave that. And it's not about, to take the other side of that, some people might hear that, say, oh, you think everyone should go to college? Nope, that we're not saying that either, which is why we have other opportunities for kids who might not have any interest in going to college, that they want to get into welding or any of the programs that MACC has, or the internship. So we're trying to make this as diverse of a day as possible, and that may grow from first year to second, third, fourth year, but we want all kids thinking about, you've heard me say before, I worry about the kids walking across the stage at graduation and wake up on Tuesday morning and think, well, now what does the world have in store for me? So this is one tool that we can use for kids to think about, what is it that I'm planning post-graduation? And what can I do my senior year to put me in the right place to be able to do that? So it's not about all kids should go to college, or all kids should go to the community college, or all kids should do... kids should do anything. It's about opening up their thoughts about, okay, what am I going to do? What do, what path do I want to follow? So I'm very excited about it.
Because of what you said, it opens up an opportunity for them that they didn't think they were capable of.
So that they didn't know could even be an option.
Yeah, yeah. So that's awesome.
So I, again, I'm very, I'm very excited about our, our junior testing day. Any other questions on that? We'll move on to number eight. Provide professional learning to enhance lesson planning to move from the focus on assessing the standards to focusing on teaching and learning standards. So again, as we moved into really at the elementary level, but at all levels, this, this standards-based report card, how do we get away from just the standards, but what are the standards? How do we help our students achieve that? Uh, work continues to be deeply aligned with the work occurring in every student's succeeds act or ESSA and future professional development planning. So again, how does, once we figure that, what's a teacher need to be, what is, so how, what's the PD, how's that connected? Comprehensive schools are working, um, on bundling standards and lesson planning after school with a plan for content leaders to write unit plans, bundling language art standards with science and social studies. So it's not about teaching in isolation, the standard, not the standard and the standard, but how do you bring those standards together, um, in either the same content area or multiple content areas and teach impactfully that way. So students see the connection between those standards as well. Uh, February seventh, professional learning, revisited formative assessment and learning targets. Any questions about this, where we're at?
Are we, in terms of, of working with the lesson planning portion of it, certainly all three of those things contribute to that. Are we, uh, there was a time, I believe, when we, well, I know, when we were working on understanding by design as a format for backward mapping, for planning from the, the standards to the instruction. Are we following a particular protocol like that, or are we not aimed at a protocol where?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Cindy to step off because a lot of that work's been done at the elementary, some at the secondary, so I'm going to dismiss that, but I think it's probably.
So we, again, continue that backwards design, starting with the standard, deconstructing it, um, developing a unit and the lessons around those deconstructed standards or learning targets. So we continue that.
Great. So that's pushed out to every teacher, or is it layering itself out?
We're layering it. We start with our comprehensive schools.
Okay.
And we'll work our way out from there.
Okay. What's your timeline on getting to everybody?
Um, you know, it just depends on the building. Some buildings have some of that built-in and others don't. So I really don't know that. We have a timeline set. It's starting with those high-knee comprehensive schools and working our way backwards.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward to community engagement. Analyze data related to students open and rolling to other districts and developing an action plan based on that analysis. Um, data has been compiled in geographical models, maps, aerial views have been constructed to analyze the data. We know where those students live. Um, let's see if that sounds kind of ominous. We, we have some general ideas because they tend to be geographically pocketed together. Uh, and so having some of that conversation, analysis underway this spring in order to develop an action plan for moving forward. So what are we going to do for, from a communication standpoint? Uh, I know that Gordon has taken some actions in regards to, you know, some setting some priorities that maybe will entice students. Uh, we have done, um, the research, really Kevin did this piece for us, and we're not in as bad a shape as, as you would think. There are twenty-one other school districts who have more open enrollment out than we do. So I was thinking we'd probably be in line somewhat with the UEN, but there's, there is a, or significantly, there are other schools who have a significant bigger issue than we do, um, but we still want to address that. It's, it's a little over two hundred, uh, two hundred and ten or so students per year, um, net that we lose. We, we do have some that come in and some that go out. Um, so we want to pay attention to that and make sure we're serving, um, those students, knowing that there are some whose parents work in other communities and so their students go there, or they have a family history somewhere, or quite honestly, they think they've got a better chance to be on the basketball team. You know, and so they, they choose to go on, on to those schools as well. But, um, so a lot of work happening around that. Number ten, streamline and broaden efforts to translate key district documents focused on Spanish and Marshallese to better serve non-English speaking families. Again, that's a one document at a time. Inventory of current translated documents have been completed. Key organizational areas have been meeting to clear, clarify and streamline the process for translating of documents in order to have uniform procedures in place. Preparing and translating documents continues to be underway. So that's going to be, um, hopefully we'd like to get that to, to the operational piece, but it's never going to end. Every time we create a new document, or every time we have, uh, new community members who have a, a, and, uh, English isn't their, isn't their dominant language, particularly with their parents, how do we communicate?
Sure.
You know, currently, obviously, we're looking at Spanish Marshallese, but there are seventeen languages spoken. So it's, you know, we have to obviously take the biggest, uh, chunks first and, and work on that. So that, um, you know, our, our, the folks who come to our schools, we can communicate with, with the parents. They know how to get registered. They know how to get a parking pass. They know how to, all, you know, all the things that are, do school lunches, all those types of things.
Do you think this might be one that gets kicked into the next year? Or can it?
Yeah.
I mean, you've got a lot of work.
So the, the process may be operationalized. The actual completion of that work will be forever.
Right.
Just because of the sheer number of documents and clicks, Mike.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we will have streamlined the process definitely and certainly broadened the efforts. We've made some significant growth in that area, but certainly this is, uh, an ongoing priority. So our hope is that really we can create a really streamlined process and, and a way to track an inventory and make sure we have the procedure and protocol in place. And we're, we're kind of taking a broad, a broad look at our main key documents and starting there, and then looking at how do we continue to, to fill in the gaps or look at areas where we may have documents that we know need to be accessed on a more regular basis. Also important to note that we do have resources in place for families, even for documents we don't have translated, whether that's to connect them with interpreters or have resources to be able to be available for conversations with staff and meetings. And, and we've got lots of folks who, for registration, prior to us having that, uh, in place, translated to have people available to walk families through the process. And so, um, this will really help us streamline that process in a way that I think will help us strategically move it forward once we have all those pieces in place.
And the technology, quite honestly, doesn't exist in the way you think it might to be, where we just translate documents, because we've had some bad experiences where you think it's going to say one thing. So we really have had to back up and, and find ways to make sure that they're proofed and, and really translated, really say what you, what you want them to say or, or intend for them to say.
And one of the areas that has been, um, Marshallese is a language that is not commonly available through most major translation services. And so we have some individuals locally who we use, and there are a few pockets in the United States that offer those services. But, um, when we look at major translation services, that's one that doesn't exist. And so Spanish is one we can easily, um, even through electronic methods, use a service and receive those documents back. Marshallese is a very different, um, very different challenge and one where, quite honestly, we also rely on our partners in the Marshallese community to help us share information and to, to, um, they're great partners in helping us do that. We've made great strides in that area in particular, in Marshallese this year as well.
And, and new challenges every year. You know, we had a group of, of young people who attend school, who come, who came from Central America, and there's a variety of languages there as well. And so, okay, now here's not something that wasn't maybe on our radar twelve months ago. Well, it is today. So that's why the process is going to be as, as important as probably the product, because the product will need to change. Uh, number eleven, building the foundation for a data dashboard that allows for the construction, or the connection to and tracking of college career-ready experiences for each student. District has selected and procured the necessary software solution and accompanied licensing to house the data dashboard and other data visualizations. Data has been received from the career information system, Cooter Navigator, and incorporated into the proof of concept, college and career readiness visualization. A working concept of the dashboard will be shared at the March Educational Program Subcommittee. We're going to be busy. So again, it, it is how do, from, from a student-by-student basis, or an aggregate, or how do we look at students? So can we look at the junior class? Can we look at, Mike, in the junior class? Can we look at, and pull some data to figure out what are the, what pathways are people on, what choices are they making? Does that inform the classes that we offer? Does it inform the relationship with, with the NICC when we're building concurrent enrollment? So a lot of that data is in place. Um, Colby, anything you'd add to, or Mark? I just was hoping for a Colby quote, but that's okay.
So the other thing that I think we're looking at is for students, what's the quality of their college and career readiness, the experiences that they've had? We want to make sure that they're having high-quality college and career readiness experiences instead of just, um, or rather than just where they've gone to a number of career fairs. Career fairs are great. That takes you so far, but really hands-on experiences are much more important for a student to figure out what it is that they're interested in. We want our counselors to be able to see that, see that real quickly and have conversations with students about having a more high-quality experience.
It also helps inform when we do things like the senior renovation, right? So you all receive the letter from the, um, labor management group about the importance of the trade. Well, obviously, we recognize that a decade ago when we redid the industrial tech pieces at Hempstead, and we'll do that at senior. But some of this information helps us because it's not only what is in the world or in the community that we should support, but it's what do our students feel connected to that they want to. So it really using that data, it can be as individual as a student, or it can be as global as how are we going to spend thirty million dollars when we revitalize or renovate senior high school? So all that data, or that data will be important for, for, for a variety of different levels and meetings. And then making it user-friendly. So again, a parent, a neighbor, a grandparent, a mentor, a friend, a guidance counselor can sit down and say, hey, let's look at your Cooter Navigator. What classes have you taken? Where are you headed? Uh, again, you know, have that conversation at graduation and you would talk with young people who have great plans. And then when you ask them about their corporate work, they haven't done a lot to build towards that future that they think they want. And so how do we figure that out when they're in eighth grade or in ninth grade and not when they're graduating from high school and, I've got to break in my chair. Um, so, so that's the importance of, of this. So we're excited about that too. And again, plays right into test day, plays right into so many things that we're trying to do for our students. Twelve, create enhanced college and career opportunities through the development of an information technology pathway program in collaboration with Northeast Iowa Community College. So again, some of our goals are global and some are like, let's do this one specific thing just to move forward. And so that one is a check mark. Uh, that pathway has been developed in collaboration with NICC and it's included in the high school course guide. Work is currently underway to enroll students in that pathway. So there's a very specific, you're interested in IT, what can you do in high school, how does that follow up at NICC, where you at, you know, a year or two years post-graduation career-wise? All right, effective resource management. Revised the district's facility plan to maximize additional infrastructure and technology funding available through the secure and advanced vision for education, uh, education save once on sales tax. Revenue purpose statement, as you know, has passed. Uh, the board held a work session to prioritize future projects and areas of exploration. So really to move that to the next level as we need to get an architect hired and begin having those, uh, conversations as it was identified around senior high school and then moving on to the next priority. So, uh, very, again, thankful to our community for their support with the sales tax and how transformative that's really been for our district with facilities our kids have. A lot of work to do, but, um, you know, feel pretty good about that. Bring the high, uh, high schools to a full one-to-one computing environment by issuing anytime, anywhere learning initiative laptops to both ninth and twelfth grade students. So as you know, we were doing a year at a time. Uh, we realized obviously that this year we would have had ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade all with laptops and not our twelfth graders. Our twelfth graders and our eleventh graders particularly share a lot of classes that we work with our teachers in the Finch. Probably came up with a plan to be able to do both of the same, in the same year. So that all of our students at the high school have the laptops. Um, at the middle school level, students in grade six and eight are preparing for high school courses by trans, using to one-to-one devices available to use throughout the school day. So our students in the middle school aren't taking them. Hopefully they check those out and use them during the school day. Number fifteen, Kevin, anything I need to say here? Ensure alignment with financial targets to ensure expenditures are maximized to support strategic goals. I think we've already written that as a priority initiative for next year again.
I think you made sure you just say, ask Kevin.
So obviously, the wheels fall off the wagon if our funding is not in line. And so to make sure we're within our means and build programming that's sustainable over time, which is why that is a goal. That's why it is, is operationalized. You all have been through the meetings. We've talked about our goal areas, our, um, our rent spend balance, our cash, and our solvency ratios. So those are really important. All of the planning in the world, all of the best, uh, of everything in the world, if, if the funding doesn't work out and you, and you have to start cutting, there are many, unfortunately, many districts in, in that boat around the state, and, and then you have to start to undo all the things you've worked hard to get to. So always appreciate Kevin's leadership in that area. Sixteen, fully implement rave panic button alert system and train staff on its use. So the rave panic button has been deployed and is active district-wide. Additional testing and training are underway to streamline the system into district use. The app has been launched in a real-life situation and provided fast information and enhanced communication. So we had the custodian who was, utilized the panic button, or the rave button when we had fire at senior. So, you know, it's just a, it's an app on your phone. You hold it down for a second and a half, connects you to nine-one-one, but it also alerts everybody within that geo-fence. Did I use the right word there, Colby? Um, who, who is also on the system about, there's a situation and then you can begin to communicate. So speed is the most important thing in a variety of situations. We all want to jump to unfortunately to the, the, some of the active shooter things, but it, there are many other uses or many other times when we need to contact nine-one-one or communicate with staff about why we contacted nine-one-one, or what is the situation within the building. So it's been a good enhancement for us.
So what is the, um, additional testing and training to streamline the system into district use if it's held out?
So it's operational right now. We're continuing to work with nine-one-one to do some additional testing. We, it's closely integrated with the nine-one-one center so that we're running a test in every building, um, just to ensure consistency within the system. We're also providing some additional resources to staff in terms of its use. So it's operational. We felt like we should just wait until the end of the year when we get through some of those other steps. But, but it is active and working today. If it is implemented.
And who's included sometimes? Like, so if any, anywhere in the district it's used, I get a message, Mike gets a message. So we're not just within that fence. And so some of those connections, or who else needs to know? Should the board get a message? Should, you know, so there's some of that fine-tuning of, you know, who's alerted and when, and how do we communicate and, and when do we use it? And there's also some functions on there that we haven't gotten to yet.
Especially given the, the scale of the district is one of the largest things, that there are multiple groups involved in various buildings. And so, um, it's not a simple process to generate the list of who's associated with each building. So we're continuing to refine that and work through some of that and what's the process look like. But, um, we have started to delve into the ability for us to communicate with staff without it being an emergency call, or at least, um, for example, the instance at senior allowed us to immediately send, actually, I sent it from my car, um, a message to the staff members to let them know when the building was clear and they could return back into the building, to let them know what areas of the building to stay away with. And that was all much, much faster than we would have ever been able to do without having the system in place to be able to streamline that communication. And we can broaden that. There are lots of opportunities for us to streamline how that works in the day-to-day flow of buildings.
Well, I, I know, speaking for the board, if it's something that happens after eight at night or before eight in the morning, it should go to the board president.
I have your emails as well. I will just forward it on.
It really, and, you know, obviously, it's one of those things where let's figure out some level of training a little bit, because one is one of those apps, it's on your phone. Like I said, it's, it's, you know, where was it at again? And so you just, just remembering it's there and that sort of thing. So.
Do all staff have this on their phone?
All staff have access to it. So it's not something that we require.
Okay.
We have had a few, not many, but a few who said, well, I don't want to, there are people, there's some misconceptions. So if, if there's, if I'm going to hit this at Roosevelt, it knows I'm at Roosevelt, but it only finds out where I'm at when I activate it. There are some people who are worried of distracting them all the time, and some people are opposed to that. I get that. And some people don't like the, the memory, I suppose, that it takes. I, I don't, there's a variety. So we have not to know it's an absolutely mandatory. And we have a few who don't have smartphones.
the app and register it, as long as we have your cell phone number on file in the district, you still receive alert messages. So there is still the ability to share the information, you can't activate the actual incident.
So they get the incoming and...
But certainly, in terms of the communication, in terms of, it's all clear to go back into the building, stay away from these areas, as long as we have your cell number, you get a text message as well. So with that, regardless of whether or not you've chosen to download the app. So there's a good communication piece there in terms of, we can still ensure that that communication is going through to all of the staff members in that building.
Questions like our custodial staff, in that case, that was the custodian that reported this incident, are they, do they have the app?
Yes, every staff member in the district has access to it.
So even paraprofessionals?
Any employee who's got a smartphone who wants the app is, we've empowered all of our adults to make the decision of when it's right to call it.
If it's a substitute teacher?
So that's really the exception, is when we get into subs, and there are a couple of groups of employees who really are not primarily assigned to a building. So when you think of folks like concession workers, and they are considered in our employee database, but their primary responsibility isn't in a school building. But in terms of all of our main employee groups, teachers, paras, custodians, food service workers, is really available to everyone.
So you think about the power of that, speed.
Oh, yeah.
We have download right now, but it's north 1500, I'm sure. So who can instantly help us secure an issue, address an issue, solve it? My over-under was 58 minutes, so I'm trying to find a way to stall for the next six. Play excellence. Implement advanced intensive professional development for administrators and elementary teachers through the differentiate workshop-based, approach-based identified needs. You know that that's how we started out the school, you know, our elementary folks are trying to work on some processes, or mark is with the secondary people as well. Again, it's a defined choice, it's not just anything, but what fits into where we're headed as a district, and then allowing staff members to say, I'm kind of weak here, I'd like to go to that training, or I could learn something from that. So August Camp DCSD Professional Learning Day, I mentioned that. Administrators Professional Development, this year has been, and continues to be focused on topics of need is identified by that group. So we have a district leadership meeting once a month, and so we end, so at the beginning of the year, we took some information on what they wanted to know about it, so then we do about the last 45 minutes as that piece. And so people who feel like they need to stay for that, maybe they came onboard after we did the training around infinite campus, they can stay and do the infinite campus training. So giving them some local choice. Oh, that's not cool. Take the next step to improve teacher practice through coaching conversations by systematizing the development and continuing to earn instructional coaches. Again, honoring the work of our mentors and our instructional coaches, how do we focus their work to help? Again, we hire the best people, and when we coach them, we train them, we mentor them, and help them continue to grow. That's the best thing we can do for our kids. At the elementary level, instructional coaches are continuing to participate in learning labs facilitated by Keeson AEA, the focus on completing the coach cycle with your feedback. At the secondary level, work continues in year four of the New Teacher Center, district level training for coaches and administration. Next year, there will be four secondary mentors who will be approved trainers, and all of our internal coaching mentoring training will be delivered by district personnel. So again, we started with a contract, a professional service contract with New Teacher Center, and then how do we train our folks and become in a place where we can control that training, so as we bring on new people? It's just a good way for us to systematize that without sort of always being tied to a mutual organization. Number 19, research best practices and develop a plan to maximize the impact of the paraprofessional employee group and student learning. Through the district development service delivery program process, the district is working on more clearly defined professional rules and special education, necessary skills and training. There'll be a new orientation program for paraprofessionals next year, with the goal of having paraprofessional development menu that builds, buildings can access for paraprofessional staff. Our paraprofessional staff, because we differentiate our specialty in programming, there's a little bit different need in every building, but how do we onboard? We have more than 400 paraprofessionals that are a vital part of our workforce, and so we need to help, just like I said, with teachers, help them grow and gain new skills. Grants have been written and submitted to support having elementary paraprofessionals trained in personal empowerment, which is what we're doing really at large scale. In fact, I have that training tomorrow, and Thursday, and Friday. So we're, the superintendent for paraprofessionals, how would we integrate personal empowerment training? And paraprofessionals in preschool now have a personal growth log to list any professional development they attend, and they are invited to attend job-like meetings with preschool teachers. So again, that's, some of that's ours, some of that's community preschool, sort of trying to provide that experience and those opportunities for our community partners as well.
What is really boosted here with the paraprofessionals that we hadn't done in the past?
Well, a lot of things. I think one thing is our paraprofessionals, so what is that training? When does it occur? And then how do we replicate that? Because we hire paraprofessionals, do we hire them yet this weekend?
We hire them daily.
I know, it's only Monday, but there's a chance we've hired one today, because literally, it's our group with the highest turnover. And so just because we do the training around behavior on Tuesday doesn't mean, you know, two weeks from now, we don't need to replicate that because we've got new folks onboard. So part of it is, what are those key trainings that they all have to have, and then how do we offer that quarterly or trimesterly, or in a way that you might be on the job for a month or two before you get the training, but you're not going to be on the job permanently before you get that training? Does that make sense?
What is the focus of the personal empowerment professional learning?
Well, I'm starting that training tomorrow, Nancy, so I can be a better... Taj, I know you've been through some of that training, or Tammy, do you want to come up and tell us a ride?
I'm starting it tomorrow.
She brought you home.
It's going to be a long...
Wow. It's going to be a long game.
So the personal empowerment and emotional intelligence, okay, it's an invitation for individuals who practice empathy, you know, what empathy means in the workplace, what is checking in, I mean, things that we are already aware of, but utilizing those moments to strengthen the relationships, to have a work, help the work environment. And then also, I mean, the power of checking in, you know, sometimes we're working on a very fast pace, say, hi, Mike, how are you? And really, I'm not looking for your answer. So this is kind of holding our horses to say, okay, I asked a question, so I better have 30 seconds or a minute to actually check in and see how.
It's really about, at the heart of it, relationship building between staff and students. Staff and staff, students and students, I mean, we're going to bring a bit, but it is because we believe, one of the beliefs that we have as a district is that the heart of an education is based on relationships. Minus a relationship, it's hard to do, have as powerful of an experience. And so it is about, part of it, about relationship building. And again, between staff and staff, or students and staff, it is part of our response also to the stress that we see amongst our staff, as our students bring more stress in, our staff feels more stressed. And so how do we pay attention to the culture and climate of our building, and our workforce, and our students?
I believe Tammy said it best last year, that it's all the teachers' responsibilities to make sure that they're checking in with every single kid that's walking in our building, right? So I think that's very important. And I participated in this training before, and it's very empowering to not only understand myself and how to regulate myself, but also to notice when certain kids or adults are, you know, maybe acting up for a certain reason. And that one teacher who's asking a question like, hey, how was your day, could be that one reason why that child, you know, changes his perspective, his or hers, I mean, teachers too, right?
Yeah, so really, the focus is really with the student, but we're looking for that from a professional basis, too, from adult to adult. Any other questions? So again, we'll bring these back in May, and go through this again, but between now and then, we'll be working on developing next year. So I've done some individual meetings with some people, got some others to come up, our D-Silt will weigh in on that, our Equity Committee will talk about that. We've got some information from a process we went through with the state team in the AEA last week that'll inform some of those recommendations. So just a good way of tracking how old the district is different this year than it was last year on an ongoing basis.
Well, I have to say, I don't know, I mean, I've sat through many of these, but this one, to me, there's just a lot of things that have stood out that are real district changes that you can see, that aren't just stuff that we're kind of working on. It's, we said we're going to do, and maybe it's the timing of how we're doing this, you know, we kind of pushed it the way it is, but to be able to see some of these things, to say, okay, we're going to present this to you at the next, you know, ed programs meeting. And there are some really neat things that are coming through here that are just, I mean, the fact that, you know, you set this junior day, you know, testing day for students, just one example, but I am just, I don't know, maybe it's just a different time of the year, but I just love hearing all of this. To me, it's different than what I've ever felt before.
And I don't think it's a different time of year, I just think it's a fact that, you said it at a couple of these initiatives, you know, this will be our first year, so we'll stumble, we'll jumble around, but you know, check in with us after year three or year four. Like, this is one of the, this is one of the outcomes from having a strategic plan that we had back in 2012, that really put us on a trajectory, to be able to start to dig into some of these things. I agree with Tammy, you look at the things that we're talking about in terms of student achievement and development, that's, those are pretty exciting things happening there that we should be pretty excited about. If I was a parent, I would be excited about it for my kid. If I'm an educator, I should be excited about the fact that I've got a district that's willing to put time and resources and planning into these types of things. Because I'll say it again, I think I said it before, there are a lot of districts around this state that are not having these types of conversations. And, you know, again, I think a lot of it is due to that we've got a, we've got a plan, a strategic plan that we've stayed true to, and I think it's been embraced by the entire district, and this is an example. When you have those two things going on in a highly engaged team, then you can start to do some pretty cool things. And I think that's, we're just on the cusp of it, but I think that's what you're starting to see are some of those seeds that were, you know, were sown many, many years ago, but everything takes time to get to it. And again, we'll be better, the second year we do it, and the third year we do it.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I think this just keeps us focused as a board, but as administrative team, as a community on that strategic plan, so that it isn't a, remember that plan we wrote five years ago, let me tell you what we've done, it's that focus. I hope you also all realize, and I know you do, that I have the privilege of sharing with you the updates, but you know where the work is happening, right?
Oh, absolutely.
We have a great team here and back in the corner, and a great team at the building level, building administrators, teachers. I mean, so much of this work, how many times have I mentioned today, we have a committee for this, or we have a group for that. And that really is because of the belief of our district for the past decades, that's not anything new, but has really been to empower teachers with a voice, to empower administrators at the building level with a voice, to really figure out, how do we do this together? Because that builds, obviously, the best ideas, but also traction and implementation versus, okay, here, do this, now do this. And so really, I want to always make sure, and I know that you know, but I say this as much with folks at home, but this is the work of, you know, many, many people. I'm just...
Oh, absolutely.
One of the things that I like is, when we say all kids, we truly are going after all kids, and I know Tom was a big advocate, I know he's probably watching this right now. We're doing for the underserved, we're doing for the kids who are always excelling, but what about the kids in the middle? We're not doing enough of them. And I think this plan just highlights that we're truly trying to elevate all kids and doing, you know, specific things for those who are not doing, doing as well as they should.
We are fortunate enough to live in a time with unemployment rates and other things where there's a lot of opportunities for kids. We just need to make sure we're doing everything we can, so that when those opportunities and the preparation need, they are a chance to succeed.
And we're supporting our staff, and we're not just saying we're doing these things without training the staff and giving them the resources to be able to implement. And that's huge, that says a lot, too. And I know that's all the work that, you know, Mark and Cindy and everybody are doing on a daily basis, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And I think in the spirit of what others have already said, some of these are very large undertakings, and I would hope we'll see them continued on the next plan, so that we can just keep getting deeper and deeper into them.
We try to sprinkle in those big ones with the ones that are like, do this, like the one-to-one, or the this IT class with NICC. So we have some that's like, okay, here's a real, you know, some are a little more conceptual, but then some are like real, the testing day. I should be able to sit here next year and say, this is the number of kids who tested, this is how many took the ACT, this is our, you know, we should have all of that data. This is the number of kids who chose not to come to school that day. I mean, but that's what we added, too, like, okay, what do we do to capture those kids? What about this doesn't resonate with them? So, so it's, some are very specific, and some are ongoing and will never end, and some are everywhere in between.
Yeah, I think also that it's a testimony to everybody in the administrative staff that most of the things are completed, or significant progress, and there's, and many of them are significant progress, which indicates that probably in education, this is what happens, most things are work in progress. You're not going to have, you have new students all the time, you've got to keep on working on different avenues. So overall, good.
I don't think we're ever concerned of coming in and say, well...
We got it all done, yeah, we got it all done.
We're there, we don't have any next year.
Good job. All right, are there any other items to come before this meeting? All right, they're being done, we are adjourned.